Almost there.
Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
A motion by Tom and a second by Mike, all in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve personnel A 1 and 2, B 1 through 8, and C 1 through 7?
I'm moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Mike, all in favor? Unanimous. I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 17th meeting of the Board of Education. I see that we have two Boy Scouts. Would you all like to lead us in the pledge? Great. Come up if everybody will stand.
Come on up.
Come on up here. What troop are you from? 205. Well, welcome to our meeting. We're so glad you're here. Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda is recognitions, and the first item is Hispanic Heritage Month. Mr. Valdez.
Good evening, everyone. Obviously Hispanic Heritage Month has kicked off. Last year, this board adopted a proclamation calling for the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month system-wide, so we don't need to adopt it again because it was previously done. So we're just going to read it out for the public. So I will start. Proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of Hispanic Americans whose ancestors settled throughout the Americas and the Caribbean and developed their own unique cultures and traditions. And, whereas, the observance started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period because it coincides with National Independence Days in several Latin American countries. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Days on September 16th and September 18th. And, whereas, Hispanic communities have been part of the American story for over 500 years and traced their roots back to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and other Spanish-speaking nations of the Caribbean. And, whereas, America has drawn strength and insights from Hispanic writers, scientists, soldiers, doctors, entrepreneurs, academics, and leaders in all workforce areas. The American culture has been enriched by the music, art, literature, and creativity of Hispanic peoples. And, whereas, 14% of Forsyth County Schools' 55,300 students are of Hispanic heritage and are an important part of the school district family and the Forsyth County community. And, whereas, the 2024 theme for Hispanic Heritage Month is "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together," recognizing the significant achievements of the Hispanic community in the economic and political spaces with a strong emphasis on protecting and advancing the American dream and way of life. And, now therefore be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Education proclaims September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month and calls its observance to all students and staff of Forsyth County Schools. The end.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the 2024 Georgia Economics Challenge and the FCC LA National Leadership Conference.
All right, welcome. My name is Derek Hershey. I'm the Associate Superintendent of Human Resources. I'm excited to be able to recognize several students and staff tonight. We're going to start with the Lambert team who won the David Ricardo Division. Lambert students, staff, are you guys here? That's okay, we're going to recognize them anyways. And Ms. Thrower, you're going to come on down and you're going to smile for everybody. So the Lambert team won the David Ricardo Division at the Georgia Economics Challenge. As a result, they're advancing to the 2024 National Economics Challenge, David Ricardo's finals in New York City in June. The following Lambert students are on the team. Mr. John McCormick, teacher, Aron, Siobhan, Balaskanda, and Schloke. And here we have Ms. Amanda Thrower, principal, to represent. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you so much, Ms. Thrower. Next up, from North Forsyth High School, for the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. Students from North, if you'd like to come on up. So this is very exciting. Ms. Bree Dyer represented the Forsyth County Schools at the FCC LA, again, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. They were very impressed that I got that acronym correct. At the National Leadership Conference, Bree placed silver with Ashlyn Barnett in their entrepreneurship event. Ashlyn represented Forsyth County School National Leadership Conference in Seattle, and she placed silver with Bree in their entrepreneurship event. Congratulations to both of you. Great job. If you are a family member, staff, friend of either Bree or Ashlyn, would you please stand so we can recognize you? Also representing or placing in the FCC LA is students from East Forsyth High School. If you guys would like to come forward. We've got Mary Gail Cheek, who attended the FCC L 24 NLC and placed second in her competition, Teaching Strategies Level 2, earning a gold medal. And I like that, Teaching Strategies, we're making some teachers here, I'm guessing. And Mary Babko attended the FCC LA 24 NLC and placed first in her competition, Interior Design Level 2, earning a gold medal. Congratulations to both of you. Great job. All right, and if you are a family, staff, or friend here to support Mary Gail or Mary, please stand so we can recognize you. Great job. Okay, I think we're ready for our superior spotlight with our team from New Hope Elementary School. Welcome. Let's give them a hand.
Good evening. My name is Heather Smith, and I am the Assistant Principal of New Hope Elementary. When New Hope Elementary opened its doors in 2022, we did so with a clear and ambitious goal to create a school that fully embraces our vision for providing growth and fosters a strong sense of community for both our students and our staff. We envisioned a place where everyone, students and staff alike, would be excited to come to school each and every day and feel genuinely connected to our school and our community. As we brought together students from four different elementary schools, we were committed to ensuring that New Hope would offer every opportunity for growth and learning, both inside and outside of the classroom. Tonight, we are proud to showcase how we've transformed our vision into a reality. Through intentional collaboration and careful planning, we have worked tirelessly to get to know our students, build a vibrant school culture, and provide high-quality instruction. Our dedication to creating a supportive and engaging environment is also reflected in the diverse range of clubs and extracurricular activities available to our students from day one. So we are thrilled to share this progress that we've made and the positive impact we've seen. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Danielle Halaskey, who will provide insight into our journey.
Good evening. So when we opened the doors of New Hope Elementary, one of our primary goals was to create and nurture an environment where students could learn, lead, and grow together. Recognizing that our Nighthawks were transitioning from four different elementary schools, this objective demanded an intentional approach from our administrators and our staff. We began this journey to build a strong sense of community from the outset. Our initial focus was on fostering connections. We organized a series of social events, including spirit nights, ice cream socials, and finally, our grand opening, all designed to bring our students, staff, and parents within our New Hope family. Additionally, Ms. Webb, Ms. Smith, Ms. Baldwin, hosted community meet-and-greets for our incoming students. Gathering, this gathering provided families an opportunity to have insights to our visions and gave them a platform to express their hopes and dreams for their new school. To ensure we are addressing the needs and preferences of our community, administrators also sought individual feedback through a parent questionnaire. Personal phone calls were made to families to gather valuable input, which directly informed our planning and decision-making. For instance, in response to the community's interest with STEM education, we integrated STEAM into our specials rotation and established the Science Olympiad team within our inaugural year. An essential aspect of getting to know our Nighthawks involved collaborating with students' previous schools. Our administrators and counselors reviewed past academic records, socio-economic, socio-emotional data, and behavioral histories. Utilizing the RTI desktop, we accessed detailed information about their academic programming, interventions, and progress. This data was instrumental in our class placements, in composition of our class, and academic services. This foundation was essential in creating a school environment where students were positioned for success. Now, in our third year, we are committed to being student-focused. We continue to tailor our instruction to meet individual needs, employing frequent kid talks to analyze data and collaborate on instructional strategies and interventions to best serve our students. Our MTSS time, which we affectionately call "flight time", is another key component of how we address specific needs of our students and support their growth. Based on formative and summative data, each grade level has developed targeted plans to address the diverse needs of our students. Adopting a "our-student" mindset, teachers collaboratively implement interventions, enrichments, and reteaching strategies using those quality Tier One instruction. Through these efforts, we maintain a school environment where every student is safe, connected, and thriving. Our dedication to creating a supportive and dynamic learning community ensures that our students not only learn and lead, but also grow together.
So as Dr. Halaskey outlined at the beginning of our journey, our goal for New Hope has always been to foster a community where both students and staff are excited to come each day. We aim to create an environment where everyone feels valued and engaged and where learning goes beyond the traditional classroom. In line with our MTSS process, we've also dedicated significant effort to listening to our community. It was clear that while academics are crucial, there was also a strong desire for our students to explore and engage their personal passions. So in response, we developed a range of specials that cater to various interests and areas of learning for our students. Our STEAM special, for example, not only integrates engineering principles, but also incorporates the arts and drama. Our robotics and innovation lab allow students to be creative problem solvers, and these opportunities allow our students to delve into deeper fields and discover what excites them. We've also introduced our passion specials for our fifth graders, offering them a choice to explore their interest. These specials, which meet once a month, cover both the fine arts, robotics, media, and even community service. Whether it's book architects creating stories for our media center, kindness specials supporting our local community, students building music compositions, or even brain teasers, students are able to connect with their peers who share their passion and to develop their skills in these areas. Beyond the classroom, and something I'm very proud of, is we have sought to create additional opportunities for students to connect with one another. We have also wanted to make sure our students were not missing out on something that was offered at their previous school because they came to a new school. So just a month into opening New Hope, we launched our after-school clubs and our competition teams. We were thrilled to see 79 students register and participate in various clubs for just our very first session. But over the course of our first year, 431 students participated in our after-school clubs. These clubs were held twice a week, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but our school community shared this passion for not only our after-school clubs, but also for competition teams. So we were able to start competition teams for Battle of the Books, Science Olympiad, and Mathletes. So within our first year, we had 30 students participate in Battle of the Books, 35 for Science Olympiad, and 25 for Mathletes. This, in our third year, we have doubled in our size, and we've also added Vex Robotics, so all of our teams have doubled in our competition sizes, which is awesome. So I'm proud to share that our efforts have continued to grow in the area of our after-school clubs as well. So in our current session that began just at the beginning of this school year, where we started with 79 students, we now started with 185 students participating in our after-school clubs, over 100 students involved in our school musical, and more than 100 students tried out for our Science Olympiad team this year. So due to these increased participation in our clubs, we now offer clubs three days a week. So in addition to these academic and extracurricular offerings, we've also celebrated a remarkable achievement in the area of performing arts. So our students took the lead in creating and performing, excuse me, completely student-run musicals our first two years. So we did The Lion King Jr. and a production of The Jungle Book as well. So these successes of these musicals reflect the vibrant spirit of our school community and the incredible talent of our students. These achievements are a testament to how we listen to our community and responded with opportunities that allow our students to thrive both inside and outside of the classroom. So now, our New Hope Teacher of the Year, Ms. Olivia Curry, will share our PBIS and house system.
Good evening. Our commitment to being a Tier One PBIS school means that we're dedicated to creating a positive and supportive environment where every student can succeed. Our school-wide expectation is SOAR, which stands for Safe, Own Your Actions, Accept Others, and Respectful. As a PBIS team, we meet monthly to review data from Spotlight to make informed decisions and continuously improve our approach. This helps us ensure that our strategies are effective and that we're always moving towards creating a supportive and inclusive school environment. To recognize and reward these positive behaviors, we have two exciting ways for students to earn points. In the cafeteria, we have gold cups for students as a class demonstrating SOAR, and around the school, students can earn house points in various settings for showing SOAR. Our house system brings us together as a community from pre-K through 5th and is aligned with our PBIS expectations. Each house was intentionally planned and named after a species of a nighthawk. To keep the energy high, we have monthly spirit days where students can represent their house. This year, we are so excited that every student is able to participate with different spiritware items that are provided. Students are celebrated throughout the year for earning house points each quarter and at the end of the year with a big celebration. Our house system encourages teamwork and celebrates the positive behaviors that makes our school great.
Last year, New Hope Elementary was honored as Best of Forsyth. This honor is a true testament of all the hard work and dedication that has been poured into our students, our families, our staff, and our nighthawk community. We were truly humbled by this recognition. Thank you.
What's the Kettle Crew?
Oh, our Kettle Crew, that's a good one. So our Kettle Crew is our peer leaders within our building. So they work alongside our counselors, they are ambassadors for the school, and the Kettle is a small group of nighthawks.
That's awesome. Oh, okay, that's where kettle comes. Anybody else?
I'd just say it's pretty neat to see because, you know, everything you've created here, all your clubs and your connections and stuff, they're a desire, right? They're a need. They're something that the students wanted, right? So you're meeting a need, you're meeting their desire to be involved and be connected. And I think that's something to show for not only your leadership, but also the community, that schools are a little bit more now than just education and learning. You know, the clubs are there, and the connection is there. And it's not us creating it, it's us meeting a need of the students and the parents. So this is a really good example of that. So thank you for sharing it with us tonight.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to take a short recess, just a couple of minutes. If anybody needs to sneak out now would be the time, and then we will continue with our meeting. Okay, if I could have everyone's attention, we have some public participation on agenda items, and I'm just going to go over, our rules are on the website. I guess everybody's read them for public participation, but we have three, everyone gets three minutes. Susie has a, there's a light right there, those lights. When the green comes on, you have three minutes. The yellow means that you have 30 seconds left, and the flashing yellow means you have 10 seconds. And then there's a red light and a nasty little buzzer that sounds when your time is up. So that's how, so you'll know what's going on. First, we have Sasha Gibson. Yeah, yeah, come up to the microphone. Welcome. Give them to her and she'll pass them out to us. Thank you.
My name is Sasha Gibson, and I have a child in the sixth grade at Little Mill. I have been racking my brain on what I could possibly say to make a difference in our children's school safety in just three minutes. And the answer is, I don't know, so I'm just going to talk about what I do know. Recently, there was a horrific school shooting not too far from Forsyth County, and four lives were lost. Parents received phone calls that their children would never return home from school. Last year, there was a 14-year-old who brought a loaded 9mm gun into Little Mill, and it was in his waistband for over an hour before it was reported by a student. It took one minute for the SRO to get to that student, which may not seem long, but think about how many times that trigger could have been pulled in just one minute. Next time you're in your office, please take a moment to sit there and time yourself for one whole minute. It's a long time. Several children and teachers could lose their lives. The See Something, Say Something that has currently been placed relies completely on the children to keep their own school safe. That is a lot of responsibility on the kids. And after the school shooting at Appalachia, there are many students who spend their days on high alert looking for weapons or listening for threats. Last year alone, there were 1,934 students in Forsyth County that were deemed homicidal or suicidal. Let me repeat that number, 1,934. 220, that's the number of violent threats against our schools. School violence is a growing issue. I believe we need to come up with a local solution to this national problem before Forsyth County becomes part of that national problem. This year, there has been 45 school shootings nationwide, and one of those shootings has knocked on our doorstep. I am proposing metal detectors in the schools. They can serve as a huge deterrent for school weapons. And as Lieutenant Garrison said, deterrence are great because by the time the Sheriff's Department gets to the school, something tragic has already happened. Let's be proactive instead of reactive. There needs to be some kind of deterrent that children can physically see in place. Having to decide whether a threat is deemed credible or uncredible can become very difficult and can be wrong. After all, the Appalachia shooter had many threats that were deemed non-threatening. Our children have a right to feel safe when they go to school, and parents should know, when they put their kids on the bus, that they will come home at the end of the day. Many schools in our state have metal detectors, and there are grants that can be applied for to help with the cost. However, when I spoke with Todd Shirley, he told me that money is not the issue in this county. I have included in the packets for you my research on scanners, grants, and school shooting stats. I beg you to look into these scanners as an option. Whose child or grandchild has to die before we decide enough is enough? Will it be yours? Will it be yours? Or will it be mine? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have James Westbrook.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to speak with you tonight about two topics related to the shooting at Appalachia High School that have affected me personally. A rapid SOS system and notification of death or injury to spouses as soon as possible during or after an incident has occurred. This tragedy hit so close to home for me because one of the lives taken that day was Ricky Aspenwall, one of my best friends. It also hits home because my wife is a district employee as a career tech specialist, and my oldest son has just started kindergarten at Hawk Creek. Their safety, the emergency preparedness, and protocols of Forsyth County have been in the forefront of my mind. This is the actual lanyard that my buddy Ricky was wearing that day, and it soaked in his blood. On it is his ID badge and the rapid SOS button that you can see here. This device did not save those four lives, but it prevented the deaths and injuries of many others. Seven buttons were hit in the freshman hallway that morning, so the resource officer knew exactly where to begin his search, and within a minute, he had apprehended the suspect. I was shocked to learn that Forsyth County has no system like this, given that 60% of schools in Georgia have one. This system helps give alerts immediately without the need of finding a phone, a walkie-talkie, or intercom system. It's always on the person. As you can see, it's on his lanyard. Appalachia is the most extreme case of the benefits of this system, but it can also assist with other medical emergencies, giving assistance with student altercations, tracking visitors, et cetera. Secondly, I urge the board to review the emergency protocols and make sure that notifying spouses or next of kin be highlighted and prioritized. To this day, Ricky's wife Shayna has yet to be contacted by Barrow County officials other than an obligatory human resources call to talk about his death benefits. Shayna, a teacher at Flowery Branch, has been visited by her principal and the Hall County Superintendent to offer their condolences and assistance. If something happens to our spouses or children, we need to be contacted in an official manner and not hear of things through the rumor mill, or in Shayna's case, after being taken down to Grady on a wild goose chase just to learn that Ricky had been dead for hours and was still at Appalachia. If there is not a designated emergency response team set up to communicate with the families, one should be made and organized to do so. I strongly encourage you to investigate and invest in the rapid SOS system, increase preventative measures physically, mentally, and emotionally, bolster our assistance and care for those struggling with mental health issues, and review protocol to ensure that families will be notified of emergencies quickly, especially victims' families. I'm proud to be a part of this community and school system, as does my wife, who loves her students, and my son, who loves everything about kindergarten at Hawk Creek. We're lucky to have great leadership, and that's my time.
Well, you can finish up.
Okay. We're lucky to have great leadership, but we should always study and learn from these tragedies and make tweaks and improvements where we can. We can't prevent everything, but we should always be prepared, be prepared to act with purpose and mitigate the damage done to maintain our high standards. Thank you.
Just one comment before we go to the next speaker. Everyone that's going to speak tonight, I encourage you to hang with us for a little bit. We're going to have a detailed presentation about our school safety protocols, and I think it's worth everybody listening to.
Okay, next we have Amy Hubbard or Hubert? Hubbard, like Hubbard, but her Burke.
Good evening. One of the many things, as a parent, that I appreciate about Forsyth Schools is the input they offer to parents in arenas that fall outside the classroom. After all, they are with our kids each day and sometimes are aware of trends before we are. For instance, several years ago, I attended one of Mr. Shirley's cyber safety seminars. You should say that three times fast. And it really helped me to think about my approach to social media with my own kids. In fact, that seminar was the first time I'd ever heard of a newer app called Snapchat. Like I said, this was quite a while ago. Last year, though, I listened to an informative webinar hosted by Parents Against Vaping, which I found out about from an email that my kid's school sent out. My local school footprint regularly hosts parent universities that include info on overall student well-being, how to help manage anxiety, and other tools for parents. Through these examples and more, I think it's safe to say that part of the district's work with our students and our families seems to be to provide resources and support for parents in ways that can enhance our students' health and well-being. So with that in mind, I submit that part of those resources offered should be information on safe storage of firearms in homes. It's not the whole solution, but it can be part of a holistic solution. The Appalachia tragedy, of course, is fresh in our minds, and last spring incident at Little Mill isn't too far off either, especially tonight. We'd all hope that adults would intuitively know that firearms need to be kept securely locked up where kids can't access them. Yet, the numbers tell us a different story. A U.S. Secret Service Threat Assessment Study found that three out of four school shooters acquired their weapon from their home or a friend or relative's home. And a Johns Hopkins study found that estimated 54% of gun owners don't store their firearms securely. So just as the school district offers parents information on cyber safety, social media trends, or threats to student health, like vaping, our district needs to remind parents to securely store any firearms in the home, not only to help prevent tragedies at schools, but to protect kids at home who might be in the midst of a mental health crisis. midst of a mental health crisis. Recently, the Welcome Back video that Superintendent Young you and Sheriff Freeman posted, you mentioned this, and I really appreciate that. You mentioned safe storage, and I think that that is a great start. In the last couple of weeks, though, I've talked to a couple dozen parents who would like to see things like additions to the parent handbook, printed materials on safe storage sent home, and reminders at school events like Parent University. Will everybody listen? Maybe not, but some will. My kids partially have Forsyth Schools and Mr. Shirley to thank that I didn't let them have Snapchat until they were a little bit older. In the same way, I think it's helpful and beneficial for Forsyth Schools to add safe storage to the resource they offer to parents. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Sy Fasson.
Honestly, I have a script on my phone, but there is nothing that I could say that these amazing folks haven't said already from a perspective that I don't have. I'm a student at Forsyth County Schools, but in that way, I do have a unique perspective, being a student. And I've heard solutions to this thing that happened 33.7 miles from this building. And a solution I've heard that's been bounced around is giving our teachers guns. And this is the worst solution that I could ever think of, being a student from Forsyth County. There is nothing that could make me feel more unsafe than having my teachers with guns. Like, it would be a tragedy to add more guns into schools. Can we think about that? A solution to gun violence that we are currently looking at is to add more firearms into schools, into the reach of 3,000 students at Lambert High School, my personal high school. Firearms or not, this was a tragedy that should have never happened. It was the most easily avoidable thing in the universe. The FBI investigated Colt Gray a year ago. And regardless of how he got the gun, regardless of the legislation that could be passed in the legislative session 40 days from January to March of next year, one thing needs to be straight. There's a solution to this problem, but it does not lie in adding more guns into our schools. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Courtney Bowers Estes. Courtney Bowers Estes? No? Okay. Jared Black.
I'm just testing. It works. Usually, my voice is loud enough. I don't really need a microphone. Board Chair Light, the members of the board and Superintendent Young, my name is Jared Black, and I am a resident of Forsyth County, and I'm a father of three girls ranging in age of 14 to 2. My wife and I love this community. This is our home. When we were choosing where to raise our family, one of the main draws to Forsyth County was the great neighborhoods and fantastic schools. My children are currently, have or will attend Chestody Elementary, Little Mill, and, Lord willing, East Forsyth. Again, my children range in age from 14 to 2, so I'm going to be at this for a while. So I read through the Forsyth County Schools Governance Team goals for fiscal year 2023. 2024 is not available online that I could find, and I noted that the number one goal is safety for students and staff. The next sentence reads, "As funds are available." And I was taken a little bit aback by this, which I get. We have to be able to fund anything and everything. Everything costs money. The, so as funds are available, the Board of Education will continue to allocate the necessary resources to ensure that safety recommendations are implemented in fiscal year 2023, which I assume 2024 as well. So this leads me to, I would take it selfishly, I assume there's some questions that I have to ask. What is being done to ensure the safety of my children? When tragedies happen, what changes are immediately implemented to keep this from happening, and how is this being communicated to the public? Not just their physical safety, but their emotional safety is too. How do I make my kids feel safe? Again, I know this isn't your fault. This is our problem as a community. And so these are the types of questions that my kids ask me. And as a dad, I always, I always felt like I could, you know, honestly tell them the truth. And I'm at a point in my life where I don't know what to tell them. I really don't, and I have difficulty with that. So I feel somewhat powerless. I don't really have answers for any of the questions that my kids ask. And as parents, we have responsibilities to our children in this community, to raise them to be good, purpose-driven individuals. Further, as leaders of this community, we have a responsibility of creating a clear vision and to inspire people around us towards a shared purpose. We're the adults here. We need to implement change, I think. In closing, I'll just go ahead and add, I've heard several ideas in installing metal detectors, having random checks, clear backpacks, badges for the educators, connecting them with law enforcement, regular safety meetings to increase parental involvement. The list goes on. You can just ask my wife or my neighbors, they'll tell you if anything you want to know. But what I don't see is clear direction to facilitate that change and implement. And Mr. Cleveland, you'd made mention, I'm sorry, Mr. Valdez, you'd made mention to stick around later on. I'm very interested in doing that. Maybe this is for not. But I just wanted to go on record that I think we, as a community, we definitely need to spend time and figure out how we can address this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jessica Fleming.
Hi, I'm Jessica Fleming, a mom of four Forsyth County students. I have so much respect for our school system. Our leaders make thoughtful decisions and truly care for all students. I'm glad that all threats against our schools are taken seriously and the students who make them face repercussions. One reason these threats cause mass chaos and have parents storming schools to pick up their children, like what happened at South Forsyth Middle School, or when police officers had to respond to a threat on a bus from Little Mill Middle School with weapons drawn, is because of the underlying fear and anxiety our students are feeling after the deadly school shooting at Appalachia High School. Some students consider their threats to be jokes, terrible, unacceptable jokes, to be clear. But the threat would have little power if our students weren't already on edge. The threat is like a match. When it meets the collective anxiety of our students, it causes a wildfire, frantic texts to parents, and panicked whispers amongst students. An eighth grader approached me a few days ago, since I'm running for the school board, and asked me the heart-wrenching question of how I'd keep her safe at school. I asked her what the school was doing to help ease her anxiety. She said there are more SROs, and they've rewatched the lockdown video, but that's it. Not wanting to jump to any conclusion, I reached out to multiple people with middle school and high school students. They all told me the same thing. Although guidance counselors are available, they haven't proactively offered lessons or group counseling for the students. Some students even shared that they're afraid to mention anything about the subject for fear it could be misconstrued. We can't just address the students causing the threats. The vast majority of our students didn't do anything wrong, but they're traumatized. Our skilled, compassionate guidance counselors should consider creating a lesson on the aftermath of school shootings to help all students work through their understandable dread. A session like that could relieve some of the fear and tension worrying our students. Finally, none of these threats would have any merit if kids didn't know that children in our state, even 14-year-olds, have unfettered access to guns. Every time our school leaders remind parents to talk to their students about the severity of making threats and the importance of reporting the ones they hear, a reminder for parents themselves should also be included. Please tell them to lock up their guns.
And last, we have Mary Kay Wood.
Good evening. My name is Mary Kay Wood, as you said. I have been a resident of Forsyth County since 1997. Since my oldest child first attended school at Big Creek Elementary in 2001, my ex-husband and I have had eight students attend schools in Forsyth County system. During that time, we have had students in many elementary schools, many middle schools, and only two high schools. So while we never wanted to leave this county, we certainly moved around in it a lot. My ex-husband and I were and are committed to raising our children within the Forsyth County school system. I will admit that my knee-jerk reaction upon hearing about the latest school shooting was to pull my child out of the public school system and have her go fully virtual. Even considering this broke my heart, I've agonized over trying to decide if her own safety, if for her own safety, it would be better if my last student spent her last two years going virtual. This is not what she wanted. Honestly, this is not what I wanted. I hated to think of all the activities she would miss out on in the last two years of school, the camaraderie, the school dances, the senior preparations, and walking across the platform with students that she has attended school with for the last several years. I had to weigh those losses against the fear that I was feeling in my heart regarding her safety in the public school system. We kept her out of school the day after the shooting, as I know many parents did, and also the following day. When she tried to return, I had to pick her up from school early two days because she was too afraid to be there. Excuse me. Fear is not something that we want running rampant in our school system. School time should be a time of learning, of friendship, and a time of making memories. However, it is my belief that this is not the case for many students. I do not believe that the greatest threat in our school system today is any weapon, though I do strongly support what was shared in regards to metal detectors in our schools. I believe the greatest problem is within the mental health of our students. The Netflix docu-series, The Social Dilemma, sheds light on the effects that social media has had on our children. Yes, I realize social media is not something we are going to be able to stuff back in a box. It is out there now and is very helpful for many of us in work and in connection. Oh, no, I skipped. I'm close. Hold on. I clicked something. It is out there now. It is very helpful for many of us, both in work, in connection with old friends, and also in keeping up with our schools via their Facebook pages. As a matter of fact, I signed up to speak here tonight using Facebook page to find my way to the Forsyth County Board of Education website, where I used a virtual link to sign up so that I could be here speaking with you tonight. We all know that the social media is, that social media is not a bell that can be unrung. It is my hope for our younger students that teachers, parents, and administrators would all be aware of the negative effects that social media is having on our students and begin to teach about the effects and the dangers of social media in a classroom setting. Mental health is at the core of school safety in general.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Many students who have made threats were then questioned, and were then questioned by police all over the state of Georgia, were found to have been students who were bullied by their peers. My own student has been the recipient of bullying on many occasions. However, as a junior in high school, it is fair to say that she is probably engaged in some type of bullying herself. I think it's important as parents that none of us assume our child would never. Addressing the mental health dilemma in our county is, in our country, is going to take time. However, I set before this evening that I am committed to diligently working on plans that could be easily put into our school systems. Hospital admissions for non-fatal self-harm has increased 62% since 2009 for our young women ages 15 to 19, and a staggering 189% for girls 10 to 14. The suicide rate for young ladies 15 to 19 has increased by 62%. And if that's not bad enough, in girls 10 to 14, there was an increase of 160%. It is interesting to note that the same rates were not given for boys. I believe due to many generations of young men being raised to pull themselves up by their bootstraps and rub some dirt on it, has led our sons to being ashamed of sharing their own struggles with mental health. Truly, the biggest killer, both male and female, for our students is silence. The question I ask tonight is, how do we get our sons and daughters talking to the right people so that they can receive the help that they need? In elementary school, many issues can be handled in the classroom. Going into middle school and continuing through high school, it becomes more and more socially awkward to reach out to the school counselors, though I am very grateful for their hearts and willingness. We are a long way off from our students feeling comfortable utilizing these resources. The latest school shooting has shed light on how one student can slip through the cracks and, in this case, cost four people their lives. It is my hope as a parent and a huge supporter of Forsyth County that we can all work together to come up with solutions that not only protect the children of Forsyth County, but also in hopes that the systems we come up with and put in place can easily be shared with other counties. I'm not one to shed extra light on our problem without also working to find a solution, so tonight, I submit, in the presence of everyone here, my own personal commitment to help create better ways for us to handle the mental health crisis in our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers for tonight. And as Mike said earlier, I think you'll be really interested to hear the presentation if everybody can stay. If you can't, we understand, but it'll really be an eye-opener, I think, for everybody. Next, we have our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Tom, all in favor, unanimous. Okay, presentation and discussion items. First, we have Mr. Todd Shirley. With special guest, Ron Freeman and Company.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Young and Ms. Mayo, and everyone sitting out there. The presentations that we've heard already by our community members are very moving, and I certainly do appreciate those. I want to start by saying the school safety is obviously at the very top of the list of the three people that are standing up here in front of you. I have had the opportunity to lead school safety now for, I believe, 13 or 14 years. Steve would have to correct me on that. And never have I felt more confident than I do today. The two people standing beside me are the true leaders when it comes to working with our students. Ms. Sarah Von Esch, who is the Director of Student Support, and Mr. Steve Hahn, who is the Director of School Safety. Never before have I met or had the opportunity to work with people as fine as these two. Your kids are in phenomenal hands. I want to start by reading something from schoolsafety.gov. "School climate describes the school conditions that influence student learning and comprises issues such as the school environment, student and school safety, and engagement among members of school community. A positive school climate characterizes a school that effectively attends to the academic, social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health needs of its students. A positive school climate can have a profound impact on student success, safety, and well-being. Research shows that when schools and districts focus on promoting a positive school climate, students are more likely to develop trusting relationships with their peers, teachers, and others in the school community, demonstrate positive behaviors, and achieve better outcomes. In absence of a positive school climate, a student may feel disconnected and engage in destructive or violent behaviors. The sole purpose of the Department of Student Support and School Safety is to create positive climate in our schools, to create an atmosphere where students can be safe, connected, and thrive." As always, goal number one is at the pinnacle of what we do every day. The Forsyth County Governance Team's number one responsibility is the safety of our students and staff. As funds are available, the BOE will continue to allocate the necessary resources to ensure that safety recommendations are implemented. And I can assure you that our Board of Education has done that. We also have our strategic plan on there, expand access to mental health resources and strategies, and Ms. Von Esch is going to address that in just a minute. We've broken our, we've broken our presentation really into three parts. Those three parts are going to be personnel, what we like to call the stuff that's in the school, the flashy things, and the programming. And each one of us are going to present a part of that. Our department goals, or our vision of our department, is to foster the optimal conditions needed for students and staff to be safe, feel connected, and thrive. Our core values center around responsiveness, cohesion and alignment, innovation, adaptability, but they are bookended by two things: loyalty and seeking first to understand. The group of people that you The group of people that you see in the middle circle surrounding the kids are the counselors, the social workers, the student advocacy specialists, the PBIS team, the nurses, the SROs, and the administration, all fall under our department. We believe that if those groups are loyal to each other and always seek first to understand, then we are doing what is best for our children and keeping them safe. I'm going to highlight personnel. I'm not going to spend very much time on the school resource officers because I've asked Ron Freeman, Sheriff Ron Freeman, to be with us tonight to talk a little bit about the school resource officers. But in all of the safety conferences that I have attended and all of the people that are connected with school safety over all the years, I have never been...I have never met another school district that has a better relationship with their sheriff's office. Matter of fact, I've met some people that describe nightmares. Sheriff Freeman has been a number-one advocate for the school system and for the school safety department, so I'm here to thank him for that. We have 130-plus school-based counselors and one district counseling facilitator. Those school counselors deal with a number of issues during the day: mental health of students, scheduling students, worrying about students' academic careers, dealing with behaviors in classrooms. They sometimes act as administrators. They are a phenomenal group of people that work nonstop and tirelessly. We have 15 social workers for a district of 55,000 students. Those social workers enter homes, they work with families in crisis, they work with the counselors and the student advocacy specialists to ensure proper supports are given to students and families. They work very closely with admin and the school resource officers and are our direct liaisons to the Department of Family and Children's Services. We have 10 student advocacy specialists that our board has blessed for the last six years. For those of you in the audience that are unaware of what that is, we like to call them mentors on steroids. They were the idea of Mr. Hahn directly after the Parkland shooting. What he said and what we all agreed on is that we needed someone out there that wasn't tied up, that could be a resource for the kids, that when we hand them a cellphone, we give the students the cellphone number, we give their parents the cellphone number, and we tell the advocates you are on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, just like the three people standing here in front of you. They work with those kids daily, they build relationships, they are always there for those students. It is unlike any program that you will find in the state of Georgia or I challenge nationwide. The success has been phenomenal, and I appreciate the board so much for supporting it. We have 52 school-based nurses, one health facilitator, and one special education nurse. And as bad as it may sound, I'm going to brag on our nurses, we have saved two lives in the past two years. That is an absolutely invaluable program, and it just...they are just phenomenal people. They are there every day for the kids, it is nonstop in our nurse's office, and there's just no way to say how much they mean to our kids. They're like moms to our kids in the schools. 16 school-based psychologists, district Positive Behavior Innovations and Supports, which is a structured program that allows consistent talk across schools to deal with school behaviors and expectations. We have a MV liaison and a McKinney-Vento student coach, a foster care liaison, who is also one of our social workers, a mental health facilitator stationed out of our office who goes out to assist not only students but also staff when they're in crisis, a prevention program facilitator. Ms. Von Esch is going to highlight some of the work that our prevention program facilitator does. And then two MTSS facilitators that we are super proud of.
Good evening, board. Steve Hahn. I just wanted to discuss some of the safety devices and software we're seeing in our schools and in our system, thanks to the support of this board. We have over 3,000 Avigilon cameras. Those are cameras that are designated in each school. That continues to grow. We can view those from home, we can also view them from our office. We have lockdown buttons at each school strategically placed. Those are direct connect to our 911 center and our sheriff's office. We are also looking, as you heard tonight, at other areas that could help us in the lockdown button world, or just looking at other remedies that could even be better. We're definitely looking at that now. We have radio systems in all of our schools, which allows them to connect to each other, to the nurses, and also to us. We have a lockdown shade. A lockdown shade is behind each and every door in our classrooms, and that gives step-by-step directions in a code-red lockdown of how to operate under those conditions, which, of course, we all know are not normal conditions. We have badge-access doors. Badge-access doors. We have probably close to 600 badge-access doors currently that allow our badges to enter, lock, open. We have 140 more that are coming soon. And we also can control that badge access from our office at the Hill Center. Vestibles that came in after Parkland in and around 2018, of course, that's to contain our visitors in the front office areas. Clinics with RNs and LPNs, and I know Mr. Shirley talked about that, but what a great set of heroes, and also great in concerning situations. It's great to have them as allies in those situations. Raptor entry system, we're checking everybody that comes into our school, we're making sure they're supposed to be there. We're able to place tags on people that aren't supposed to be there, so that goes to not only our law enforcement, but also school safety and administration at the school. AED Stop the Bleed Kits and Naloxone, which is also Narcan, those are readily available in all of our schools. And then our EOP manuals. We've made those, we updated those approximately a year or two ago, and also added it to an app so that people on the go that move throughout our schools are able to look at those. And then, moving over to the right side in the system, we have a 12-foot video surveillance wall in our command center at the Hill Center, and actually additional command walls, too, that surround us, that we are watching every day, all day. We carry a law enforcement or first responder radio that not only does Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, but we're also able to track coming PD, our EMS, and our fire. And so any calls that go out to our school, we're able to track that, bring up those cameras at that location, or call to those administrators. We have district-wide weather alert radios, which are very important. Five, six times a year, we have some very concerning weather, especially it seems to be at the end or at our release for elementary. So we make sure that we're able to correspond with that radio system we have to share that information timely with a weather system unit that we have attached to the Hill Center. We will do that in a timely manner. Safety plans, those, of course, are dictated by GMA. We get those done every year at the beginning of the year, and we send that out. So every school is going through their safety plans. Safety practice drills, again, by the state, those are mandated. The P3 tip line. We had over 500 tips last year. We're probably on pace to have 700. The word is getting out, and for the most part, the information we get is accurate. We're very proud of that tip line. Getting that information also goes directly to our admin, and it goes to our law enforcement. So 24 hours a day, that's monitored and ready to be responded to. And then 3M window film, we've been putting that up. We still have a few more locations we're putting that in, but that is in all critical locations in our schools. Anywhere that an outsider civilian can drive by our schools, we have the 3M. It's not bulletproof, but it is shatterproof, and it really does help us to keep people from the outside looking in on our students. Thank you.
And then, programming and services. Board, thank you so much for giving us the time to speak this evening, guests as well. Again, I'm not going to read both sides of the slide, you guys can read, but I did want to highlight several things. One, PBIS, that was something that you heard New Hope Elementary speak about. It's also something that you heard Mr. Shirley talk about, where we can proactively talk to students about the behavior expectations in the building. We train our staff in that as well, so that's a voluntary program that 80% of our schools are already engaged in. Sources of Strength is another voluntary prevention program led by our prevention facilitator, Lindsay Simpson. She works alongside schools to provide students with some understanding about what are their sources of strength, what do they...who and what can they lean on in times of struggle? So they go through and identify who are the trusted adults that are in my building, who are the trusted adults in my life, what are the skill sets that I currently have when I am in a time of struggle that I can rely upon, and then who can I reach out to? We have 20 schools that are actively engaged in sources of strength this year. We have a robust mentoring program. As a matter of fact, we have mentoring training going on this evening as well. We ended the year last year with 500 mentors. Roughly half of those were school system employees, and the other half came from community members. So if you are interested in being plugged in into our community and into our schools, I encourage you to become a trained mentor so that you can build a connection with a student. We've already spoken about our counseling services and our counselors. I want to reiterate how pivotal our counselors are in supporting students, not only in times of crisis, but in working together with them as they work through changing families, changing demographics within their community, in any way that they can support a student being successful at school. Our counselors work alongside our social workers and our student advocacy specialists to create a three-pronged approach to really support our targeted students who are struggling. Our wraparound services, we have two schools that are deemed community schools that provide supports outside of just your academic environment. So they may provide a food pantry, they may provide clothing, they may provide mental health supports. We have drug counselors in multiple schools. We have a partnership with Georgia Highlands for a school-based health clinic that has actually saved the lives of a couple of students in the past year as well. And then our Compass Program is our program that is specially designed for students with extreme behavioral needs, so we support those students in a specific way through the Compass Program. We've already talked about safety training. We do want to really hone in on the fact that our safety training is open to anyone in our school system, so as long as they have permission from their principal to attend. We have eight trainings that are happening already this year that are scheduled out. Some of them are tied specifically to crisis management. We have three that just concluded with Behavior Solutions, so Classroom Behavior Solutions Training, which is something you see on the right-hand side, supporting students and staff once again with what are the expectations in the classroom. If your students aren't meeting those expectations, how are you teaching them? So we are not going to assume anything. We're going to say that, hey, if you don't know how to behave in the classroom, let's make sure that we set the expectation that we teach you, just like we would at home. If you have a student or a child who is not adhering to your bedtime routine, you're going to teach them, this is what we're supposed to do. The mental health training and supports. We have four different programs that I want to make sure that you all are aware of. Assist, Youth Mental Health First Aid. Safe Talk is a new program that we're bringing that is specifically designed to be a warm handoff, so if you are an administrator, if you are a counselor, if you are a classroom teacher who is faced with a student or another adult in the building sitting in front of you who's experiencing a mental health crisis, you know how to react and get them to the help they need. So you're not assuming responsibility for getting them to the help, but you are providing what we call a warm handoff. So we want to make sure that our staff are equipped to be able to manage those demands if it comes to them, to know how they can provide this student or this adult with appropriate resources to get the help they need. We've talked about health services training. Our foster care supports and McKinney-Vento supports are very specific. They include tutoring for students to help catch them up should they need academic support. And then our mindset de-escalation training, that's a partnership between special education and our safety department. That is a verbal de-escalation strategy that we can use both with students and with staff, or really any adult that you encounter, to help bring them down, to help them re-regulate if they are indeed in crisis. And then partnerships and collaboration. We are blessed to have many partnerships, both with the sheriff's office and then outside agencies. We have memorandums of understanding with 25 mental health providers currently who are able to come into our schools with parent permission, as long as the students meet the need for someone to come in. We are provided with grant funding as well. We have three grants that totaled up to roughly $85,000 last year to support students who may need additional financial support to be able to receive the mental health support that they need. We have partnerships with multiple healthcare providers who provide classes, who provide dental work, who provide medical services, again, with parent permission, as we deem a need, whether it be through our nurse or through our social workers. Our nonprofits, we couldn't do the work that we do without the place and the other nonprofits that we partner with to ensure, again, that our kids and our families are getting their basic needs met, so that when they come into school, we can meet them where they are, support them academically, socially, and emotionally.
Board, I passed out the copy of the safety training schedule for the year, and to anyone in the audience or anyone listening, you are more than welcome to shoot me an email, and I'll be glad to send all those safety trainings to you so you can see what we're doing. It's a little bit different school safety presentation. I know a lot of people like to hear the bells and the whistles, but the bottom line is this: if something does happen in a school, it has happened because we have a disenfranchised student, it has happened because we have a student that is lost. Our goal is to find that student and to intervene and to support that student, and that is why we have so many support programs in place in this department. It is why we have worked so hard to build a tremendous relationship with the sheriff's office, because those SROs are not officers in the building, they're part of the community. I'm going to ask Sheriff Freeman if he would mind coming over and just highlight quickly some of the things that he wants to talk about, about the school resource officers.
Sure. Thanks for having me. Everybody, y'all know me, I'm going to talk to them. And you can hear me, right? Okay. Look, when I took office in 2017, there were nine school resource officers, maybe ten. Today, you have 58. We run the largest school resource officer program of any sheriff's office in the state of Georgia. There's 159 counties, we run the largest, right? I'll lead with this. When Parkland happened, my son was a senior at North Forsyth High School. When another school shooting happened, my kids were grown, my daughter was in our school system. Being a cop and a SWAT guy and all that, I have a little bit different look at some things than maybe the average parent, but that's still my babies, right? So from a standpoint, when I hear parents that are anxious and scared... And I would thank Superintendent Young and I both have probably talked to well over 100 parents, all right? In some means, in some way, shape, or form, we get it. We get some piece of it. Here's the thing. I would argue we do school safety probably better than anybody in the state of Georgia, but hold that thought. I coached football for a long time. Even when my team won 42 to nothing, we still watched game film, and we still saw how we could get better, right? There's always things you can do better. No one's saying there's things we can't add to, there's things we shouldn't do. We're talking about some things. We talk about cameras. Our real-time crime center is standing up in the sheriff's office. We're going to be sharing those cameras to the sheriff's office as well. The school resource officers and the student advocacy specialists and counselors, I can tell you from what we deal with, are the most vital piece that we have in this entire thing. They lead in identifying kids who are in crisis. They lead in getting those kids connected with something other than an act of violence or a sense of loneliness and frustration. I've got one in the back of the room, that's Captain Eric Silvius. He's been in school safety for 22 years. He runs...I have a captain runs our school resource officer program. That's a really high rank. Has 22 years of school safety. I'd stack him against anybody. He has kids in the Cherokee County school system. We're parents, just like you are. So I lead with that. There's a lot of things that we're continuing to look at. There are challenges that exist in law. We're working with...we met recently with some of our legislators from here in Forsyth County to identify some of those things. I'll be blunt, one of the things that challenges me, really much so, is if we have charged a kid with making a threat to a school, it's really hard for us to track them afterwards. That's Department of Juvenile Justice, and there's got to be some law changes to make them share information with us, or give them the authority to share information with us, so we can track. And track can be SASs and school resource officers meeting with kids and parents. It doesn't mean tracking in a way that they're...we're going to make them more so to get worse, right? There's things we can do to keep them connected, to make sure they're doing good, make sure they stay, before it does become an act of violence. So there are things that we're discussing right now, right? There's two in every high school, one in every other school. There are explosive ordinance detection dollars, which also can smell for firearms. I have K-9 narcotics units in our school system that are in there every school. We changed that when I came in, and Superintendent Young's predecessor, it used to be a big old deal to be able to do a drug search or bring a drug dog into school. Now, the SRO K-9 officer walks in and waves at the principal and walks in. They're part of the family now, right? There's, it's, they're part of the family now, right? And that keeps a lot of stuff. The deterrent factor of those dogs is just another layer of safety that we do. Those things, I will tell you, SASs, I have never seen that. When I described the SAS model and the counseling model that we do in Forsyth County to my fellow sheriffs who are concerned about school safety, look, it's one of my things, as sickening as it sounds, it sounds, I have done a lot of historical research on school shootings. I've probably as well read as many. I talk to sheriffs all the time. I sit on the board, the executive board for sheriffs across the state of Georgia. I've had sheriffs call me this entire past week, ask me, what do we do in our SRO program? What do we do? And I tell them about the student advocacy specialist program. And they're like, what's that? Can my superintendent, I'm like, hook your people up with him and we'll talk about what that is. Those are making a difference. There are other discussions to be had, there are other things that we continue to look at. Obviously, some things we're not going to talk about. I'm not saying we're, it's not being, it's not a code word, but I don't want to tell everything that we're doing. But the biggest things we're doing is we're putting people in these schools who care about your kids and will put their lives on the line to save your kids. I know what happened in Barrow County. I've had a briefing on Barrow County from people who were physically there. There's a lot of stuff in the news and some of it is inaccurate, okay? I sat through a confidential security briefing on Uvalde this summer in Oklahoma City. I wanted to throw up when I was done with it, okay? We learned, someone said, I think it was you, sir, and if it wasn't, I apologize, you spoke very well. It is a tragedy if we don't learn from every tragedy, right? We do that when a, when a public safety officer is lost in line of duty. We need to learn from that. So we're continuing to learn. We had 100,000-foot discussions recently about what that is. My team, this is my chief deputy, Chief Perkins, we've had probably, what, eight hours of meetings since that fatal Wednesday in Barrow County? At least, to talk about what are holes, what are opportunities, what are things that we can do? They've been part of those conversations. Here's the secret. We were having those conversations before Barrow County happened. One of the things that hasn't been said today, I think is very important, is right after Parkland, we put together a multidisciplinary team, right? Public safety officers, firefighters, sheriff's deputies, school safety, EMA, emergency management, those kind of people. And we went to every school in Forsyth County and we did a physical assessment. We watched kids go in and out. We watched educators and staff members go in and out. We looked to see if somebody had a door propped open. We looked to see what we thought vulnerabilities would be. And that's where film on the windows, that's where the vestibles, where the, where you kind of contain people coming in. That's where that came from. Not from Parkland, but from that. Those are scheduled before Barrow happened to start again for the next roundup in October, right? We'll be going to every school and looking at and looking to see if we find vulnerabilities. I say again, that was scheduled and set before Barrow County ever happened because we're working on those things. I think it is vitally important there is an armed deputy sheriff in every school. 99% of the time, I'll tell you, I think the SAS and counselors are more important than the SRO in the schools. But they have to be for, for that other part. And we engage, just like the SASs and the counselors, to engage these kids. Chief Perkins and I were at schools for three hours this morning. Today I had about 80 deputy sheriffs at your school system. Normally I had 58, I had about 80 today. And we were high-fiving kids and we were also watching kids. We're watching some kids who obviously were a little nervous. And I will tell you this, we talked about social media and I'll kind of end on this. You put me in front of this, you want to know what some of the problems are, I'll tell you. Because I deal with them every day. They just announced, Meta just announced that Instagram and some other things are about to come out with some parental controls on it, for parents to be able to have parental controls. Get hold of that dang fall. Get hold of what's happening. Because what you think they're saying and what they're doing is likely not what it is. And their brains are not developed. When you talk about middle schoolers, I went to a scene the other day where a 13-year-old stood up on a bus and yelled, "He has a gun." Well, my daddy would have took a belt off. And I asked where the parents are. And I was told by another family member, oh, they got to work tonight, they're asleep. There were other threats that we worked and rumors and things that we've done in the past week. And you know what, they were great parents. They were awesome parents. And they got engaged and they were, they were, they were on top of it. We've got great parents, we've got great schools. But it takes all of us because sometimes that part's missing, right? That's where your SASs, your counselors and others, to be honest, they're filling a hole. Parents ain't doing what they should be doing. All that small percentage of parents. We've looked into rumor after rumor, we've looked into threat after threat. But let me tell you this, it is happening across the entire nation. And sadly, it happens after every school shooting. After every act of mass violence, just like what happened at the concert in Las Vegas. There were more threats, wasn't in school, does happen. We investigate each and every one of those. We have a threat assessment team that is Mr. Shirley's team and my deputy sheriffs. If a threat comes across P3 at 2:00 in the morning, we're knocking on your door at 2:00 in the morning. And you go, well, I heard it from her. Then we're knocking on her door. Then we go to her door until we get to the final threat. And we make sure that kid that might be named in that has not come to school until we have worked that out to determine the validity of what that is. Those threat assessment teams are three and four deep and they work nonstop. They will work for 24 hours straight if they need to. But it is important we, as a community, have conversations with 13, 14, 15-year-olds who don't have developed brains, who think this is a way to be a big man, be scary, or be funny, is just leading on to the fear and anxiety. It is important that we talk to our community, we talk to our kids about those things. I'm tired of arresting kids, right? I will continue to do it if it's what it takes to keep this school system safe. I would much rather have SASs, parents, counselors, and SROs resolving this before it ever gets to that point. We're doing a lot. We're reviewing game film, excuse me, now I'm a sports guy. We're reviewing game film right now. And we're going to find holes. And we're, we're all committed to filling whatever hole we may find. I've talked with both, excuse me, talked to many members of the board, talked with Superintendent Young. We've talked more in the past week than we have in the past month. And when Superintendent Young came in, we met and we agreed every month that we have coffee so that we can talk about school climate, we can talk about school challenges and things that we can help them with. That was long before Barrow. I get the realism of fear and anxiety. I don't fault it a bit. I felt it a little bit when my kids were in the school, okay? But understand, we take this serious and we are dedicated. And I have men and women who will put their lives on the line to protect your children. That being said, I hope I covered what you wanted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to end just by saying that the wheel in the middle, again, that's what school safety is all about. It's about finding people with heart. It's about connecting with kids. Those people that you see are doing that, administrators, SROs, nurses, SASs, school social workers, counselors, that's where we prevent something bad from happening in school safety. Questions?
I'll say, you know, I hope we communicated it clear enough to the community that came out and I thank y'all for coming out. You know, like they said, when these events happen, they come out of the woodworks to think we're not doing anything. I've served on the school board 20 years now. When I started on the school board, I was a part of bringing the very first nurse into Big Creek as part of the PTA. We funded part of, a part-time nurse to come into that school because kids were bringing drugs to school on the bus and giving it to the secretary. We saw it then. And over 20 years, I can tell you, Mr. Hahn and Ms. Shirley are my brothers. We have talked and talked and talked. I have traveled with them to association meetings and where they have won national awards for the work we're doing here in Forsyth County. So it's not just us and the way we're doing it right now. This has been evolving over the 20 years that I've served. So hopefully that was communicated clearly enough and Ron as well. I think you were a deputy back then. So we've all come a long way. There's, I've got a little more gray hair than you do, but at the same time, we've talked about this and talked about this and served and worked on it. And we are at a good place, but we're always going to study the game film. We're always going to continue to work on it. I just handed out 40 doses of Narcan to the first responders that are part of the volunteer force of the sheriff's department. And we're putting AEDs hopefully within four minutes of every person in this county so we can curb full arrest. And so we're doing things that are important in this community. And all I can say to the community is get involved. Find that little piece that you want to be a part of, whether it's mentoring, whether it's being connected with these kids, learning a little more about the counseling programs that we have. Be a part of the drug council. There's a lot of opportunities to be involved, so do that. And know that it didn't just happen because of last Wednesday.
Todd, real quick, if you could, just to confirm with the community and the parents that you guys do have plans in place. So if an unfortunate tragedy were to happen, that you would clearly communicate to the community and to the parents what to do at that point, is that correct?
We have, we have two levels of plans in place. We have school-level plans that, that would deal with smaller events. And then we have district-level plans, including very clear calling trees. We have a, we have a district-level reunification location. And every, every member of the cabinet and every member of the district crisis response team has a designated area to go to in case something happens. Ms. Von Esch has put together a team of people to be at that district relocation site. So those plans are very detailed. And once, once we make decisions to move, appropriate communication will go out from our communications office. The communications director will be right with me the entire time.
And same with the sheriff's department, right? You would communicate to parents what to do and things like that.
We absolutely, we are a part of that reunification, because you need a safe spot, right? So we certainly are a part of that, we marshal that. We also have, you know, fortunate, a very good point about making sure we, unfortunately in our line, we're, we're good at doing bad things and that is making notifications. So we, we have processes in place. We do tabletops, we do full-scale exercises, just like when we do active shooter drills. We do every year, full-scale with hundreds of employees and hundreds of people involved in those. So yes, we have those things in place and in policy. And just later this year, we've got coming up another, another tabletop coming up, all exactly that major incident, like a, like a mass violence event, just, God forbid, but so that we are prepared and we're not trying to figure it out. God forbid if something happens.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. And I think that, you know, tonight you guys have demonstrated that you are all parents also. You have a plan in place and that you would communicate to the parents the next steps. We want to make that reunification happen immediately. So to listen to those, you know, notices that go out, an emergency that goes out, so that's a good point. I think the other thing I was going to say, I think one of the speakers brought out about the community, and this is a community issue. And it's not a community issue that should be talked about for two weeks after an event. It should be talked about all the time, right? And I think that the community, number one, needs to talk about it. Parents need to talk about it with their kids. Be honest with your kids. I mean, that's what I did with my son, you know, be honest with it. And even now, he's in college, they had an incident and he called me afterwards. And, you know, because we've had that conversation, of course, my background's like yours and so we see it world a little bit differently. But, you know, he was prepared for that. And I think the other thing that wasn't mentioned tonight we need to talk about is get involved in your kid's school. There's watchdog dads, go to the school. If you go to watchdog dads and the reason why it was created was there was an event in a school, I think it was in Chicago, but don't quote me on that, I don't know. And the next day, 55 dads showed up and said, we're going to do this and we're going to make sure our school is safe. Get in the schools and volunteer. I mean, you're volunteer students, go and volunteer at the, I'm sorry, elementary school students, go volunteer in the school, get involved and be there for that.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, guys. I've got my kids in the system, so I, I get it. It's, it's nerve-wracking, especially, you know, the abundance of information that we've all been consuming over the last two weeks, you know? I never once hesitated to send my kids into school, probably because I have better, deeper understanding than the general public does. But I hope the message came through that this system is absolutely proactive in, in these measures. We're not overreacting now because we don't need to. We're, we are already doing this work. This work is happening all the time. One of the speakers made a mention about funding and I imagine the lawyers said that something like that had to be in, in that statement. But I've been asked by parents several times this week, you know, what is the impediment for this measure or that measure? There is none. We're waiting for these professionals to determine what are the best measures and those will be the measures that this school system will have. There's no, there's no impediment, I can say that pretty confidently. The detection and prevention, things that we do, and I know we throw all these acronyms and all these names and people might not fully understand what all these positions are, but there's a massive dragnet stretched across every single school that's looking to identify these kids that may be in crisis or may be a threat or may need connection. And that is the single most important line of defense that we have. And I think as a board, we'll, we'll look at how we can expand that. The counselor ratio is something that we've, we've talked about a lot and we're heavily lobbying our general assembly to help us improve that ratio. More boots on the ground, the SAS program, obviously we expanded it some this year and hopefully that, that program continues to grow. Don't feel like we're ignoring your pleas or your concerns, we're not. Every person, these guys, a heck of a lot more than us, but everybody in this system has been hyper-focused on keeping kids safe, not, not just now, always. And I'm, I'm proud to send my kids into these schools. I never, never miss a beat, so thank you guys for what you do.
Okay, I just want to say thank you, it was a great presentation. And I think there's so many misconceptions about things that happen. And I personally know how hard you all work and how you work with Ron and his team. And I send my grandkids every day. I'm really proud to be in Forsyth County and where I know that we're as safe as we possibly can make it day to day. So thank you guys so much.
And I would, I would chime in with my thanks and, guys, sit down, take a load off. Thank you for that presentation. And Sheriff Freeman, you know, I, I know I speak for, for our whole Forsyth County schools family and our whole community and our gratitude for what you do proactively and always, always on the front lines and always there helping us brainstorm about how to do it better. And I just appreciate you, just appreciate you. And the one thing I want to say, and I appreciate the comments tonight, and I think this is one of those, this is one of those topics that I really appreciate, having, having kind of grown up here in the last three years of watching. When I first came on and we, the, the board meetings became, you know, battle zones for, for culture wars. And this is one of those that's not a culture war. This is a nonpartisan, this is a not, everybody tonight, and sometimes you come up and you sound angry, but anger is usually the secondary emotion. The primary emotion is fear. And, and we understand that. And, and so what you have to know, what I wanted them to sit down so I could look you in the eyes that are out there and for the folks at home is, is we're, we're all on the same team with us. There, there is no motivation on anybody's part not to do anything and everything that we can. And there's no hindrance to that in, in all reality, as Mike said, with, with finances. That's not the case. It's conversation been going on with all these companies and all this technology before Barrow. They're continuing now. We'll be working with the Barrow County folks to find out what went well in some of that technology, what didn't. So we're, we're going to be continuing to break this down. But, but just know that we're all on the same team, we're all in the same family with this. And, and Mary Kay, is that right, Ms. Woods? I, I think hit it so strongly, like we, we are all sort of debating the downstream issues of how to, of how to react, of what technology, of what to lock down, of how quick to respond. All important conversations that we will always continue to have. But the bigger issue that we've got to come to grips with is the upstream issue before they even get to our schools. And that involves a lot of things, home trauma. It involves nutrition and lack of exercise and screen time addiction. And, and social media plague that is upon us and addiction. So, so there are a lot of things. And while you look to the schools to have all the answers, we're going to strive to continue to find those. But we're only going to get answers to that if we continue to work together as a community in, in trying to figure out this problem. So I appreciate the comments tonight. I love our team that we've got and there's no bigger admirer of the, of the sheriff than, than this guy. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have the finance report with Mr. Larry Hamel.
Tonight we'll discuss the August 2024 financial statements. As always, we keep goal three in mind when we talk about the financial statements. So we started the month off with $152 million in cash. After receipts and disbursements, we ended the month with about $123.2 million. This time of the year, we're living off our fund balance and reserves as we're waiting for the first money, groups of money to come in from the tax digest. The year-to-date, through The year-to-date through August 31st, we are about 9.17% in collections. This time in last year, we were about 9.38%, so we're a little bit behind. Tax digest went out a little bit late this year, a couple weeks, so we're probably looking later in October to get the majority of the money, beginning in November. On the expense side, year-to-date, we're $121.6 million spent already, we're about 18.72%. We're a little bit ahead of last year's 17.1, some of that's due to timing and also opening schools. On the debt service cash analysis, for the debt service, as you can see, those accounts have gone down dramatically. We dropped the mil rate a mil two years ago, that's the effect of that. We also have money reserved in Splosh 5 and General Fund to make up for the difference in the mill drop. We have about $145K in those two accounts. This time last year, we had about $11 million. For Splosh 5, that fund is on the tail end of being completed and finished out. We had about $31 million last year, we have 5, 1.5 this year. Splosh 6, we had about $42 million last year, we're down to about 23, almost 24 million. A lot of that has to do with us being in the latest cycle and finishing up the previous cycle for work in the Splosh 6 calendar. Special revenue fund, we will have about $1.6 million set up in the budget, that's because we were clogging out last year, and we're getting ready to open the new year, so there's only a couple funds that actually have been set up for that right now. On the capital projects, the school food service cash analysis, we ended the month with about $22.9 million in cash. We made $14 million in transfers out for payments for debt service this month, and so we had about 27 this time last year. On the school food services, we ended the month about 19.8. As you can see, a lot of revenue came in since the month of August, was a short month for school nutrition. This time last year, we were about 19.8, almost the exact same amount. On the investment summary, currently, we have about $50.8 million in our investment fund for General Fund. You can see we moved about 28.9 out, out of that fund to the cash fund to help pay for bills this month. This time last year, we had about 33 million. The debt services is at 20,000. We had about 10 million in there last year. The Fund 600 is new, we started putting money in there to help them generate some interest income. This time last year, we had no money in that account, it's 15.5. You can see they earned about $70 million in interest this month. Splosh 5, we're down to the last $1.5 million. We had about 31 million in there last year. In Splosh 6, we had talked about there earlier, we're down to 23.9. You can see some money came out, and the Splosh revenue coming in was about 5.4 this month. We had 42 million in there last year. On the Splosh collections, one thing I do want to point out, if you look at August 24, compared to the previous month, we had a slight increase there, but if you look at year-to-date, where August was last year, was 5.7 versus 5.3, and it shows the decline of 7.72. This time last year, the Department of Revenue updated their computer system, and we got a big, one-time lump sum of about $770,000. That was a catch-up for several years, where they went back and found some money they hadn't sent us, so that's why the big difference in those previous year to now. On the elementary schools, we ended the month with about $4.5 million. We had almost the exact same amount of money last year. On the middle schools, we ended the month with about $2.4 million. We had about 2.3 last year. High school is about 6.7, we had about 6. All the receipts and disbursements for elementary, middle, and high school are normal for this time of the year. As a percentage, we had about 49% of the total money was in high school, 18% was middle, and 33 was elementary. That made up the total of almost $13.7 million. Those are the financials for August 2024. Any questions?
No questions, thank you. Now we have action items. Policy JGCD.
So that is what Heidi Avila, our lead nurse, presented a month ago. That was put out for public feedback, none was provided, no feedback, no pushback. So I would recommend for approval the updated policy, JGCD.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Tom, and a second by Mike, all in favor, unanimous. Okay, we have points of information now. Anything you need to point out? No? All right, we'll take a short recess, if anybody would like to slip out, and then we have two more public participation on non-agenda items. Put the microphone on. Mark Pitt. No? Okay. Next, we have Jared Kershaw.
Well, yeah, I, I usually do it like 24 hours before, so I'm really surprised that somebody beat me, but, okay. So, my name is Jared Kershaw. We live in dangerous times. The world teeters on the brink of World War III as our current administration approves long-range strikes into Russia. There have been two assassination attempts of our president within the past two months, the latest one by an activist supporting the neo-Nazi Ukrainian regime. Of course, the blame belongs to the madmen with their fingers on the triggers, but the rhetoric painting our president as a threat to democracy and labeling peaceful protesters as insurrectionists, worse than the Civil War, is maliciously irresponsible. Corporate media encourages this with a sly double standard, where overseas bomb threats against Springfield, Ohio can be blamed on discussions of migrants eating cats, but actual assassination attempts apparently have nothing to do with their own hysterical claims of a Hitlerian danger to our democracy. But political polarization isn't coming from the people, it's coming from corporate echo chambers maximizing fear and hatred of our fellow citizens. With that said, we can find a note of unity with my left-of-center friends on the topic of recent violence in our schools. This past May, we heard a talk about safe storage, and the month after, I joined their call for more education on proper storage of firearms, and reviewed the four rules of firearm safety. On September 4th, 2024, a 14-year-old whose abusive father did not safely store his firearms, took one of his father's guns and murdered four innocent people in a Barrow County school. We can all condemn this tragic loss of life and evil and negligence which facilitated it. But we can also be grateful that Barrow County, like Forsyth County, has armed officers at every school, and many lives were saved when the murderer was confronted by good guys with guns. We can also be grateful that the negligent father is being charged with murder for allowing his violent son access to his weapons. As tragic as this incident was, these parts of the system are working. While Bailey mentioned the news, teachers at the school also had just been special, issued special panic button IDs, as mentioned before, and were quickly able to lock down the school and notify armed officers on campus. If the board has not yet investigated deploying this technology, I beg you, look into it, see if it can improve our security. Improved communication during the incident saved countless lives. Of course, there were failures too. Our federal government, as with so many other murderers and assassins, had previous contact with the killer and did not follow up appropriately. It's bad enough that our Justice Department has been weaponized against political opponents, but even worse, that it is also failing its basic duties against truly dangerous threats. I'd respectfully request that the board create policies of transparency when there are violent threats made to our schools. We are the last line of defense for our children, and we cannot defend our children against threats kept secret from us. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for the presentation by the sheriff. That was amazing, and I would love to buy lunch for anyone who disagrees with me.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? A motion by Wes, and a second by Mike, all in favor, unanimous.